Good morning, this is City Council, City Council, Council meeting. Today's date is 6, uh, July 6th, 2022, the time is 6:31 PM. This media has been duly advertised on City Hills, being performed with the Public Media Act, uh, otherwise known as the Sunshine Road Hall.
Swan, Danford.
Present.
Federal Air.
Here.
Thomas.
Present.
Sabona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Sis from.
Present.
Six and eight.
I'm saying a motion for, uh, to approve, uh, previous ones.
Necessary one.
Exactly.
Bye.
All right, it's happening. Now we have, um, a presentation on the stack of our citizens service. It's, um, website by the police department.
Thank you.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to stand here so I don't have my back to some people in all these things, I know they might be interested in it too. So the, right here, what we have here is Pro Phoenix, it's the citizen service portal. This is linked to our CAD system, the police department's CAD system, computer automated dispatch. So every call that we go on, it's a date, time, case number, and it's in this system right here. So if you go onto this website right here, which is on the city website, the city's webpage, there's a link on there, and you click on there, it'll take you to the citizen service portal, and what you will see is modules, these four modules, which are, many of you out here have this in front of you, I know a couple of you have it, they're right here if you need it. It's four modules here. One of them says crime math, the other says crime statistics, find accident report anonymous tip, and I'll go through each one of those that are on here, I'll wait a couple minutes. All good? So when you click on that, that, uh, web address or from the, uh, from the city's webpage, if you click on there, our website is down right now, but in a couple days it'll be back up, our new website, and it's on there too, and it'll, it'll take you right to this. When you click on there, you're going to see these four modules, they're going to come up, right? The first one, which is probably the most important one, is the crime math. What that does, to give an example, say this courtroom, say at this courtroom, 17, 17 North First Street, right, and I want to know how many burglaries have occurred, you know, in a one mile radius, two mile radius, a little further than that, and I can put these parameters in there, and it'll come up, every burglary that have come up, or I can just not put anything, and all the crimes or all the activity will come up. So you can narrow it down to, to what you want, you know, on this particular section right here. The date range, you have from yesterday, you have from the previous week, you have from the previous four weeks, or from the previous three days. The system automatically defaults at 28 days, so if you don't change it, you know, when you go in it, it automatically defaults at 28 days, all right? On there, you have crime types, there's a number of crimes, burglaries, robberies, assaults, you know, it's, it's probably like about 18, 18 of them, if you can click on it, if you want to see specific, you know, um, crimes. Location, you can click on the location, like I said, you can put, say, the police department, you can put your home address, most people will put their home address because they want to know what's going on around their homes. And you can span out how far you want to go, I think it's one mile, maybe two miles, I forget exactly what it is, but it'll tell you the specific, you know, incidents that are happening around, around your house. Um, throughout the website, you know, when you click on the different pages, you're going to see like, it looks like a little square box with an eye and a telephone, if you click on that box, it's going to say, see something, say something, right? You click on it again, it's going to direct you right to the anonymous, anonymous tip, you know, page, and I'll get that a little bit later, you know, because that's towards the end, but you'll see that throughout the website, you know, or throughout the webpages on there. Um, with this, just so you know, you're going to be looking at a spot, you see these little boxes right here, these little colorful things that's on the map, those are locations, like where we've gone to, where there was a, say, a robbery, where there was a burglary or whatever. What it does not give you is the exact address, it'll tell you, say, like, 400 block of North Main, it'll give you 400 block of North Main, it'll give you the date, you know, of the incident, it'll give you the time of the incident, it'll give you the case number, but it will not give you the exact location, like, or address, all right? When you put in that information, what that does is, it takes you to a, like, a management report, and it'll tell you, and what it does is compare it to the year before, so we would be from like 2000, uh, 2022 to 2021, during this timeframe, you know, X amount of robberies occurred, say in '21, and '22, it'll say, this amount occurred, and then it gives a percentage for that. Now, how that percentage works, I'm really not too sure how that, you know, how that works, but it does give you a percentage for that. But all of this is done right from that first page when you're putting in those parameters, like, the, the address that you're concerned about, how far you want to go, whether it be a mile, two miles, like that, the date, you know, and stuff like that. If you go to the next module, it's going to be, uh, police report. We found this to be one of the most useful, because in the past, to get a police report, everybody had to come in, they had to go to the window over there, you go there, a lot of times, the report's not done, you come back again, the report's not done, you know, or, you know, it's done and it's waiting on supervisors approval. What the system does right here, when crash reports are completed, and when they have been, uh, approved by the supervisor, anybody can go on there, they ask for certain information, and this is kind of small, so I got, um, they ask for your driver's license, your first name, and a case number, and usually when you have a crash in Pleasantville, the officer will provide you with a case number, you know, and the date and all that stuff. So those things, those three things have to be in there, without them, you won't be able to get the report, but once those three things are put in there, you can click on it, if that report has been approved, you'll be able to bring the report up and print it right from your home. We found that to be very beneficial, you know, so people won't have to come here and go to the window there two or three times, you know, take off from work to try to get down here within business hours, you know, if they're working daytime hours, so that's been very beneficial for us. The last thing is the anonymous tip. You click on the anonymous tip, there are 14 different, say, like, incidents that you can choose from on an anonymous tip, and the connection to the incident, there's like four, you know what I mean by connection? You were a witness, you were the person, you know, that was involved, that type of thing. Um, and then you would go in and put in the details, what you saw, right, or what you heard, or what you know, what you want to report. When you click on that, well, let me get stopped, go back, you can add files, like, if you want to send a picture or something, you know, you want to attach something, you can do that too, but then when you click on this, it automatically goes to our supervisor's email. The supervisor's email is from me, the chief, all the way down to the sergeant, because what happens is, we did it that way because, say, there may be someone that wants to report drug activity, right, so my detectives are going to want to know that, so supervisor from the detective bureau is going to take that, and then they'll, they'll follow up with that. If there's a parking problem or something like that, someone from my traffic unit, that, that will interest them, they will take that, and so forth and so on. If it's an administrative problem or something like that, it might be something from my captains or my internal affairs division. So that's why, that's why we've done it that way, so everybody, from me down, will see every one of these that come in. And that is pretty much the system, how it works, uh, it's, it's been up for about, just about a year now, um, just, people just have to know that it's there. We have it on the website, like I said, it's going to be on our website, it's very easy to use, it's very user friendly, I mean, you can't make no mistake on there, you know, it's, it's that easy to use, and it's always monitored, like I said, from me all the way down. Anybody have any questions?
Chair.
Yes.
I have a question. So does this software, um, keep a track of how many people have, um, taken to the portal?
Not that I know of.
Could you see if it does?
I can check.
I just think that that's important, because we have to make sure that the residents are using this portal, if it's something that, you know, we have in place.
Okay. Yeah, um, and the reason why I don't think so, Carl, when you say that, because when we talk about anonymous tips, if we was able to track that, people, like, if you was to click on the site, right, and I can tell, you know, that, you know, Carl clicked on the site, it's, it's like, what, you're just looking for a number?
Yeah, just a number.
I, I really don't, I really don't think that that can be done, but I could try, you know, because that's, that's something that, yeah, I just don't think it can be done, you know, to just see how many people visited the site unless you have some type of toll or something like that, I don't think, yeah. But I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other communities, surrounding communities using this? Uh, anybody that use Pro Phoenix, it's built into the system, and I know us, Agarve Township, Atlantic City, you know, we, we all, we all use it, as a matter of fact, Galloway, we are able to look at Galloway's crimes in our system, and they are able to look at ours in Atlantic City, because we're all linked up, you know, in, in Pro Phoenix, it, it works really well. Does that help, that, does that also help in resolving crime? It, it does, especially like with tips, because we get tips directly to us this way, I mean, we do also with Crime Stoppers as well, and then we also have another system on our website where you can go, and there's so many ways you can get information to the Pleasantville Police Department anonymously, it, it's, it's not funny, I mean, the software, you know, the, the, the links and everything on the websites, it's just, people have to use them, you know, if they, if they want to get to us and they want to give us information, it's a way to do it. Any more questions? Yes.
Um, Chief, with the, um, the accident reports, when the police officer, do they give the people involved in the accident information of how to access this online, or?
No, but, you know, we can, we can, we probably could, you know, develop like a card or something like that, that would direct them to this, and, uh, it would, it would probably, but a lot of people know about it because they're using it already, specifically for the crash reports, but we probably could do a better job of getting that information and correcting there, because we do have a lot of crashes, and there'll probably be like 100 a month, you know?
That's a lot.
Yeah, it's been like that for years for a little town, but, yeah.
Thank you.
What, what people know, like, when they get the information out about a crime or something, when they love it, it's been taken care of, how would they know? Would they know if it's going to be followed up on? Yeah. We, we can't get back to them to let them know, because we don't know who they are, all right? But, you know, I can assure you, when, when tips come in, they will be followed up on. Thank you. It's not like back in the, uh, it's not like when I was growing up and as a kid, and you called the cops and you say, it's an issue or something, and then the police car pulls right up to your house in front of your house, and everybody, maybe like that, you know? Well, that, that's one of those things where that has changed, you know, without a system like this, because we recognize the fact with certain things, you know, and, and the dispatchers are trained to ask, do you want police contact? And if they say no, they don't want police contact because their neighbor's playing the music too loud, we know not to go to their house. So, you know, that, that's been around for years now, you know, every now and then, you know, we have a young officer, you know, that will, you know, what was the, what was the caller again, and he'll go right to the house, but a more seasoned officer wouldn't do that. Somebody up there.
Is, is only a four police officer in town?
Say, say, I'm, I'm sorry?
Uh, uh, that, 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 that,[896.48]
Decatur Avenue.
Justice McCarthy.
So we're having money from
I guess he's answered my question. I just wanted to know how much out of two million dollars that we've been borrowing is going towards this project besides six hundred thousand?
And the two point five million dollars you borrowed for infrastructure, six hundred thousand will be because that's the portion of the road, we just can't give it for all the blacktop. You're gonna use it for the infrastructure work based on the bond and about six hundred thousand dollars worth of the sewer work.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any way Barry, next time we can get a look at the bids when it comes?
They are, believe they're attached to the resolution.
There's three.
Bids?
There were three bids.
Yeah.
One point nine, one point seven, one point nine now.
Thank you.
I don't think the actual bid is there, but the information for the bid is in the amount just there.
Is that from Anzley Avenue from Shore Road, Main Street, all the way down to Franklin Avenue? Franklin Avenue? Yes. On both sides.
On both sides.
So that's a big street and a long road.
And it's a big street and a lot of problems. Because there's so much traffic along there, where it cuts from Northfield and Wood to go to Lake City, it's fast that way. The road is, I can imagine, once they start doing the work, it's gonna be, Main Street's gonna be jammed and up to the Blacktop. And that road will be closed.
And Decatur Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks.
Resolution one thirty-two authorized to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the Jersey Department Transportation for the transportation alternatives program.
Any questions?
Resolution one thirty-three endorsing proposed U E Z assistance fund project entitled the Lakes Bay Waterfront redevelopment park project in the amount of one million dollars and zero cents.
Any questions?
Yes, someone, let me know this, please.
So the Old Jokers Field, which is a grain acre site, which is currently under redevelopment, has a project cost to it over two million dollars. We have to, we have a six hundred thousand dollar, a little over six hundred thousand dollar grant in place to support the improvements of that grain acres parcel. So we said, we discussed ways to close that funding gap and with the assistance of U E Z, which is specifically used for economic development, we feel that that would be a good fit to help us close that funding gap to make sure that we are able to build that part one hundred percent to the scope or the desire of council.
How much is the, I'm sorry, is U E Z?
So currently, under the new reform, we have a five-year, five-year grant in place for U E Z. Each year, your amount that's designated to your U E Z municipality is gonna change based on a calculation that they use. For the first year, which is your twenty-one, twenty-two year, which we're in, this is our first project, is one point four million dollars. And that money has to be spent now and specifically for projects that are in the stage that are, our grain acres project is in, it's ready to go, which is lacking the funds. So that is a perfect fit rather than sitting down trying to discuss another project. A million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but it doesn't stretch far as you just witnessed when we talked about the street improvements. So instead of raising that money in the budget for our taxpayers, we can get it through the grant and get the part developed.
Now, do we have a five-year plan for U E Z money?
We are, we're creating that as we speak.
Thank you.
So.
Any more questions? Next.
Resolution one thirty-four urging the swift patches of S dash three thirty slash eight thirty-six zero four, which shall restore the energy tax receipts to municipalities.
Any questions?
Resolution one thirty-five granting approval of the Colombian holiday celebration on July seventeenth, one P M to seven, at the Langston Tilton Avenue's ballpark.
Questions?
Resolution one thirty-six granting approval of a Caribbean carnival parade in the city on July the twenty-third, ten A M to six P M at the Old Jokers Field.
Any questions?
Resolution one thirty-seven authorized an execution of a memorandum agreement with Moose Garden Life Incorporated, regarding the Pleasantville bike path garden and beautification project. Council President, I'm just gonna see if the principal agent is here, is Mr. Head here? Okay.
Welcome?
Yes.
Yeah, come, please come forward and speak on this.
How tall is it? You're not asking me a question, I'm sorry.
You wanna give a citation on?
Um, so I'm here to present a pathway piece created by Moose Garden Life, created for the year in the city of Pleasantville. I would like to take the bike path and add flowers, artificial trees, colors, and implement it with mazes, hopscotch, here and there, like, good quotes. But the theme of the bike path is to fuel everybody when you walk, run a job. I want the colors to bounce off so you have gasoline for life to start your day, in the middle of the day, in your day. I wanna bring the gold standard back to Pleasantville. I would like to make Pleasantville mean what it says. And I think this bike path is a step toward, my goal is to stop crime. I know it's hard to do, but I believe flowers, colors, trees, bring people together, and then him starts. I'm gonna spread him.
Subliminal messages, right?
Excuse me?
Subliminal messages. The subliminal message of messages, putting their message out.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. But direct though, but direct though.
What's your name?
Uh, Stephen Head.
Any questions?
Let me elaborate a little bit more, thank you, Steph. He has a great vision, but when his opportunity is brought to the city of Pleasantville, he started out in Atlantic City doing a garden in what they call the Merlin Avenue Apartments, or that Merlin, however you know it, no one else. Like the gentleman said, his heart goes out to those families and people who have experienced loss through violence, street violence, and he created this garden back there. And not only is it a garden for people to come and to either celebrate or recognize those who have lost their lives through that, but he's teaching young people, and this is the part that I think that really we embrace, is that he's getting young people involved in how to grow plants and landscape and do things of that nature. So he was introduced to Pleasantville, and we were thinking of where he could do his garden, but as we started brainstorming, they came back to us with a mural concept. And because we have the bike path right here, we wanted to create something that is totally different. As we all know, the bike paths connect from App Seating all the way to Summers Point. But what says that you, what, there's no signage, there's no difference other than probably the size of the homes that indicate that you're coming to Pleasantville, that you're entering into Pleasantville. So we wanted to create our own signature. And we started out with the neighborhood preservation program with the murals that we had on Main Street. So this is why we selected that area of bike path where we can piggyback off of those murals and create ground murals now where the kids can come in or anybody who's walking can come in and just really be revived through art. And we want people to really start appreciating art and understand what art is about, and particularly teach our young people. And I believe you're getting a group of youngsters that's gonna come out and help you with this project, right?
From the central school, I have Ms. Marion here, she's a teacher. Yeah, the kids, I'm trying to take also the people off the street. We had a fundraiser, we had a job fair, I cut like sixty people hair. But I also have like a connection to like a rehab. I'm trying to clean up the neighborhood, literally, on the trash. Everything is to value the property and preserve the people.
Thank you for your body of work.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Head. How long will it take to construct this project?
Three to four weeks.
Thank you.
Who keeps the upkeep on it? Is it Bennett, he comes to see you Pleasantville?
We're gonna partner with that.
I have a garden staff, but most of the bike path is gonna be artificial, where you ain't gotta keep or cap.
It's very low.
But the other thing, if you appreciate the art, the, so the Langston has what they call forty-eight block projects, so they have the forty-eight blocks of art all throughout the city. And of course, we have our two murals on the buildings that we have here, and we just did our bus station. So we're using these arts, so we're not just getting anybody to come out and scribble around per se, but we're using these, we have set, your group has partnered with forty-eight, forty-eight blocks, and they're coming into our town to do our work. So it'll be something that's really gonna be professionally done and well maintained. And as you know, this yard work that we've done so far with the three murals that we have, they've done a great job. And these are all young, local people.
This is great. Council wants a question. So in the agreement itself, three to four weeks is the completion? Will it be given in a year for us to get the plans together? So that's what the MOU between Mr. Head's organization and us would be, a year to develop and really come up?
Yeah. To develop the program after the construction is done?
No, 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 there's gonna be phases that go into the completion of the view. Yes, so Mr. Head, can you talk about that?
So we trying to start phase one. So the initial, the initial whole bike path was forty-two thousand, so we had to slim it down to twenty. So we gonna do phases, so a hundred yards, you feel me? Then we gonna do another hundred yards sporadically at another end, then a hundred yards, another hundred yards. We gonna keep fundraising, I ain't gonna stop, I'm gonna keep fundraising, fundraising. My goal is to make this whole bike path look like this where Northfield, whoever's on this bike path gonna wanna, you feel me? Gonna wanna keep going. I wanted, I wanted to make it look like Wizard of Oz, Avatar, everything that made you happy, you feel me? Even though you a kid, we grow up, color still make us happy.
Any questions?
I heard, I heard you said artificial. You saying that, because I know you meant the flowers.
Yeah, so artificial flowers, so you listen how you have artificial flowers where somebody have a wedding or funeral route. I have a person that's like a interior designer where we would, all right, so boom, the mayor wanna see the fence, you get what I'm saying? So we have like a diagram of artificial flowers right here, you get what I'm saying, like a bouquet. But the bouquet might, it might lead to the, to the bike path, or it might, it might say a name, it might say a quote, but it'll be sporadically spaced through the fence. And then we have like here and there, little lights lined up.
Steph, you wanna give some of the audience, some, so they can see it all, so?
Bike path, um, so talk that talk. I don't know.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Resolution one thirty-eight, approving the renewal of assumption of license for the twenty-two.
Talk that talk. Nice meeting yourself. Do I got more?
You need more?
Resolution one thirty-eight, approving the renewal of flimery retail assumption of license for the twenty-two.
Any questions?
Next is review of bill list.
Good evening, we're gonna target the bill, check through the page between the last council meeting and this council meeting. I just see the bill list is not gonna happen this time because there's not a lot of cash in the bank. So we're trying to pay what we have to. August is the month where we will get state aid as well as taxes, so the behavior come, come August. At the bottom of the page, we paid bills, one or two, one for a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, which was bond reimbursement, the bond suspension of reimbursement for something to happen. I think we borrowed money three years ago for some of the street work, including pro-Phoenix area that Captain Chief Williams talked about. Then September five is for our payroll for this time, which included our retirement money for Chief Williams. Bill to be paid, you go to page one, four from the bottom, airport seating alliance. That is seating for the bus station, we paid for by N P P money. As you know, we did a lot of work in the bus station, murals, painting on the ceiling, the floors, the walls. We brought in new airport seating with a armrest between each seat, so it can't be used as a, as a bed. If you go to page two, halfway down is our dental payment for retirees and active employees for a month. And then three or four below that is our vision care, again, same thing for retirees, I'm sorry, for the active employees for, for the month. If you go to page three, there's nothing there. About halfway down, S H I International, this is software licenses for the police department, for some of the software that they, they do to, to do whatever they do. And if we go to page five, three down, four down is Phoenix providers. That is, we are required to file with the Securities and Exchange Commission all of our bonds and notes that we do. And we need an agent registered with Securities and Exchange Commission, and this is an annual payment for them. They will file everything, all the paperwork involved, so we're in compliance. Formers marketing, I think for those who were here for the wellness day, this is what we paid for a lot of different things. Again, this is all through the N P P grant, so there's no money coming out of us. The bottom of page five is Regan Auto, that is the schools portion of the fuel that they use through Regans. They're trying to get into accounting system like we are, but in the meantime, they're still using our Regans account, even though we don't use Regans. Page six, two-thirds of the way down, we're more intercom truck equipment, thirty-one thousand dollars. What this is, this is for a two thousand, I believe, thirteen dump truck. When a body starts to rot out, we go stainless steel, they last a lot longer. So rather than buy a new truck for eighty thousand dollars, we're able to replace the body and the dump part of it for thirty thousand. I mean, this is, because, you know, we're near the shore, it's used for salt, it's also used for, it's just eat right through a normal body. The stainless steel will last ten, twelve, fifteen years. So this is something we've been doing probably for the last four or five years, it's really helped us maintain our equipment better. And I think most of you know, most of our equipment's anywhere from ten to twenty years ago.
Mechanics on the public works.
Right, right. This was, other than that, just normal operating bills, etc. Small bill list this time, trying to accumulate money, but we will be getting grants. It's a state aid on the first, and we're also looking for the market rest of money sometime within, end of July also, the last, the last payment. Any questions, Tony?
Yes, page four.
Pardon me?
Page four, the COVID test. It says the date is six thirty twenty-two, thirty dollars reimbursement. Is that for the test or is that for copay?
It's for Christine.
Yeah.
She had a copay for the insurance, she went to urgent care, and through the policy, we will reimburse portion. Because when we went to a new health plan a while ago, emergency costs were, I think, seventy-five dollars. The regular plan we had before recovered like forty-five or fifty of it. So we made a decision that anything above the fifty, we will reimburse as long as they go to urgent care during certain hours. This is what we've done.
So she went to urgent care for this test?
For COVID, yeah. That's my understanding, according to what the bill said, it was, she paid out of pocket for, through her credit card, for the, for the COVID portion of the test, for her copayment portion of the test.
Can we look into, I guess I asked this last meeting, updating our COVID testing policy?
Policy is updated, I don't think that that's the issue, I think it's the feeling that you're concerned about. So the premier bill that was tabled two council meetings ago, we have not, we shouldn't have put that back on there because we're still working with the company, their billing side, to get that detailed, to find out why that bill is what it is. So we're no longer using premier, which is not part of the policy, it's just basically part of the practice. But we're no longer using premier, and we will get updated information as to why that bill is so high. This is a new hire, so I'm not really sure what circumstances were with her has led to the testing, but this is not through premier, this shouldn't be through premier.
Right, I know it's not a premier, but, so the new hires, we do pay for their COVID tests.
We do.
And then it says reimbursement, no max, reimbursement for two fifty-eight?
What I saw, what I'm saying, what I'm looking at is that she went again, because apparently, maybe someone near her had COVID, she had to be tested for it. Because we require that people, if they're in close proximity of anybody, even if-
So she didn't go to, she didn't go here for a new hire?
No, 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 this is different. The new hires are paid automatically through, and she's been hired since February, so it's not a new hire. Bill.
Councilwoman Thomas, that was for her E M T class. She had to get her testing to go into the regional medical center for her clinical time.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, once again, you know, she, she has insurance, but she didn't use her insurance where they didn't bill her and she has for her COVID test. And she came out of her pocket and paid the worship or whatever.
She paid the copay.
Paid a copay, right? And again, I'm saying that she was a new hire because she was a new hire to get the E M T classes done, correct? Right, so I don't know what her insurance situation is at that time because she was not under our coverage. So I will look into that for you.
Okay.
Any more questions? Next is a public portion, anyone's public questions, people attend the items. Please come forward.
I don't think we named number ten, maybe we want to ten.
I repeat.
Good afternoon, Mr. Archie, four seven, they can have a present.
Hello.
Uh, hello. First, agenda items, I guess make it a reference to resolution as well. Is there any way that the agenda items could get more specific or more into the, the resolution besides what we have here? So by me being at home or anyone else, you can get more understanding of each resolution. So could that be put on your website?
I think that question was asked at the last meeting. Melville, I'm gonna lean to you, because I'm not sure if this is statutory or practice, but the actual agenda document, the public is not getting, they're only getting the agenda. So they're requesting the actual document or more details of the document.
And resolution.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's what we-
Well, I was asking for both, if it's the same, it's the same.
Yeah.
I don't know, so-
We're talking about the same thing, so can you look into that so we can respond?
Mr. Archie, will you give me to the next meeting to get this?
Next meeting, sure. You don't have to, you can just put it on line, that'd be good too, but I'll wait till next meeting as well. All right, thanks.
Anyone else with a public? Say another one? Most of the public portion? Second? One favor? Now, we have movement for discussion for council. Council, uh, council.
Not me this time.
Okay, and I have another thing this time, that's, I take, entertain a motion to close the work session.
Motion.
All the papers? Can we take a break? Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council, regular meeting. Today's date is about July the sixth, twenty twenty-two, the time is seven fifteen P M. This meeting has been duly advertised in City's newspaper performance with the COVID public meeting act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Would you please stand for the flag so we can vote? Convocation for, convocation flexing. Our father.
Swan, Davenport.
President.
Favelera, E, Tom, Fred, Kimona.
President.
Korea.
President.
Sisstrom.
President.
Cincinnati.
Entertainer motion, that's what we're gonna make.
Necessary motion.
Second.
Aye.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, first, we're giving Resolution one thirty-one, award the contractor South State L C for the road and sewer improvements to Anzley Gold Bar in the amount of one million, seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars and zero cents.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-two authorized to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department Transportation for the transportation alternatives program.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-three endorsing the proposed U E Z assistance fund project entitled Lakes Bay Waterfront redevelopment project, park, park project, in the amount of one million dollars and zero cents.
Motion. Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-four urging the swift passage of S dash three three zero slash eight thirty-six zero four, which will restore the energy tax receipts to municipalities?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-five granting approval to the Colombian holiday celebration on July seventeenth at the Langston Tilton Avenue's ballpark.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-six granting approval of a Caribbean carnival parade in the city on July the twenty-third at the Old Jokers Field.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-seven authorized an execution of a memorandum agreement with Moose Garden Life Incorporated, regarding the Pleasantville bike path garden and beautification project?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one thirty-eight, approve of the renewal of flimery retail assumption of license for the twenty-two, the twenty-three, Tom?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to approve the bill list?
Necessary motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes, on everything but number two, four, nine, two, zero.
Two, four, nine, zero?
Yes.
Okay, what page is that?
Four.
Eight-four, okay. So noted. Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes.
Motion approved, I need a motion to approve the bingo license.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call Davenport?
Yes.
Favelera?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kimona?
Yes.
Korea?
Yes.
Sisstrom?
Yes. Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is a public portion, anyone from the public, just a public portion, state and, uh,
Well, so this is not in reference to agenda items, right? Because they're public. It's Dell Archie again. Try to go.
You can get him saying, Dell Archie.
I have a question in reference to, what's the master plan for Pleasantville in two thousand twenty-two? I was on the website, I seen previous, uh, master plans, but for twenty-two, I didn't see anything. So, the minister or mayor or council, whoever, I'm saying to you, what is the plan in reference to the master plan for Pleasantville two thousand twenty-two?
So, the master plan, I think, is required by statute to be updated every ten years, seventeen years.
So, the last date on that master plan, if it's two thousand eighteen, that's for two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, it's a four codified time period unless we do a master plan reexamination that would periodic review there. But if there's nothing denoting a twenty-two plan, the one that was already in place.
Yes, okay, okay. Um, I was also looking at Midtown Neighborhood Validation Act. Validation Act, can you get a word out? Thank you. The plan was, uh, completed in June of twenty-two. Question. The city is securing funding to replace sewer lines and pay various roads in the Midtown Neighborhood. Is that a draft or is that something that's real?
The plan itself?
Yes, because this is one of the items in the plan according to page five.
Right, so that, that's an application that you're looking at? And should that application get approved, then we work with the plan? And part of the plan is to do some infrastructure work within your Midtown District.
Okay, um, where are we with that then?
So, the application is just submitted.
Oh, was it, okay, okay. So.
I'm not really sure that to be, is Yolanda, you aware of any of the time things for announcements? I can get that information, but it was just recently submitted within this June.
Okay, and just making note of another issue, well, um, line, in reference, I use it, municipal validation properties, um, this one is under number three, page nineteen. Second bullet says, the city is working toward a program to convert all street lights in the Midtown Neighborhood to brighter, to a brighter LED technology to improve public safety. Also states, uh, number bullet indicates that the city is implementing a multi-year plan to install decorative street lights throughout the downtown. Question. Is this only designated for the Midtown Neighborhood? And is it only for the downtown and not Pleasantville as a whole?
Well, we, the street light, you and I talked about that before, that was the, um, connect, uh, connected.
Alain City Electric.
Okay, like, yeah, like, okay. So, um, that's what we're doing throughout, but it's not just Midtown, that's throughout the city.
Okay.
The decorative lighting that you may be talking about is the one on whole term.
Well, I'm just reading from the, this comes from the revocation, um, plan that's prepared here.
So that plan is specific to Midtown.
Right, that's why I asked that question, right, exactly.
There's two plans in place for lighting.
Right.
The one that's included in the Midtown for your decorative lighting.
And one for downtown.
And one for your citywide upgrade for LEDs through Alain City Electric.
Only business access because I understand it's not on here, I understand why it's not. I, I get that. Um, will that information be on the website in its entirety as far as what's going on, where we are with that? The lighting, because I, I, I'm gonna cut you off. If the city of Pleasantville is doing something that's to that significant, that is beneficial to the whole city of Pleasantville, to me, that's a plus to be on the website. And explaining like, if it's a timeframe of when it's going to start prior to, based on the electric company, whoever, whatever they give you guys, you know, to share that information online, so in that way, I don't have to ask the question again. You know, because I've been talking to Mayor about this already. And, um, because I have a bright light right in front of my house because the squeaky wheel.
That's right.
Got the oil, so my wife kept calling, and we got it. But now, once I leave my house and go around, sew your feet and turn the corner, it's pitch black. So, it should be for the whole city of Pleasantville system, I said, that it's something that's in the working.
We, Ken Moska can give us updates.
Who does?
With the, uh, Alain Electric, Ken Moska.
Okay.
Every now and then he gives us, you know, periodically, he gives us the updates.
Okay, so the last update he gave, what are you looking at, what's the timeframe, start?
Well, we don't know, but we're hoping, we're hoping by the end of the year.
Yeah.
So they're doing audit.
The audit has to be completed first, so once the audit is done, we, we did enough on the ground work to assess where the dark areas were based on, you know, the residents' degrees. And then the mayor and I and the team went out ourselves and did the entire city. They're really going behind us and do their own audit and compare. And then, um, you know, that report will be done and submitted along with the application. We don't know, the audit process is in process now, so I'm hoping within a matter of weeks that will be completed. They're working with our Public Works Department and I think our CFO will get that, the audit done. Um, so you, you have to go, you're dealing with separate entities, um, for the audit. Um, and then you're dealing with Alain City, uh, Alain, yeah, Alain City Electric. So there's going to be some timing issues, but we will certainly keep you updated. I think, like you said, um, once, if we're successful in getting that approved, we will certainly share it through the website, but as we go through the process, maybe we can give updates at this, at this point.
Right, like I said, just to let the public know what you're doing.
I agree.
And then, once it gets approved, it's approved. But when you set for assessment, is that only for the areas that's needed the most?
Just the entire city.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with a public?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Michelle Archie, resident of Pleasantville. I just have a question. Is there an ordinance about tractor trailers parking in throughout the neighborhoods?
Yes.
Yes, there is. Are they back?
Yes, and I'm seeing more, there's one on thirteen hundred Lincoln, Ashland. And when you're coming down Ashland, you gotta like stay on one side so the car coming can go through because the whole tractor trailer is taking up one whole side. So I was just wondering if there's an ordinance, so what do you do when they, um, is there a number you could call to say, listen, the tractor trailers are out here. I seen one on Adams, right off of Franklin, a big old tractor trailer.
Main street, right around the corner.
Yeah, so it's like they're coming more and more into the city, so nothing's being done, so, you know, it's the open field.
You think, things are being done, um, we just have to, like you said, get, get it reported so that we can deal with it. But there's two ways that you get it reported, or actually three ways. You can actually come in and call it, but the easiest and most efficient way is start, if we're trying to get the public to start utilizing the website. When you go onto the website, your homepage, it says public service there, you click one there and you put the information right into that site, it goes immediately, instantaneously, it goes to the right department and they'll see it and you'll get a response back through this portal that your, uh, request was received. And if you put your email address in there, you'll actually get an update as to when it was abated. Um, but as you was just mentioning, the streets, I believe our chief was taking down that information and I don't know if you want to have any comments as to how you address it.
Thirteen Lincoln, thirteen hundred block of Lincoln Avenue?
Yes.
On Ashland Avenue, where was that?
I'm not sure.
Just on it, was it?
Soon you come off of Route nine on Ashland.
Okay. Sure. Five hundred, six hundred.
Yeah, somewhere right there.
Okay.
And then when I was driving down Route nine, I mean, um, Franklin, right there on the corner of Adams and Franklin, big old tractor trailer sitting right up in the yard.
Hold definitely, I can, we've, we've ticketed a number of these tractor trailers from in here, we, we are addressing them. The, the first time, we usually go out there and give them an opportunity to move, they return again. We have it in our CAD system and we've been writing tickets.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's, that's what we do, the best thing to do outside of what the, uh, Ms. Peyton just said, on the website, you can call sixty-one, six four one sixty-one hundred, which is our dispatch. They'll, they'll call the cop and a cop will go out there and address it right then and there.
All right, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a public?
Can I ask a question to?
Yes.
Um. And I'm presuming that most of these people are residents in Pleasantville, that that's their work, that they're trucking or whatever. And they can be ticketed in it, but do we have a place for them that we can say, instead of parking this in front of your house or on the street, do we have, can we think of someplace to ask them to put their cab or, or their truck so that we can say, here, we, you know, we don't want you parking here, but we're gonna, you know, have a place for you?
We, we don't, the city doesn't have a designated spot for that, but that is a, um, a project that one of the commercial, uh, businesses is working on, is bringing that very same concept to our planning and development committee, and we'll be really talking about that really soon. And I'm, I think we've already talked about it there, it may be going through the planning board next, but that's the type of space, they see that there's a need, there's a demand for it and, uh, it's a new road, um, kind of out of the neighborhood per se, um, so it is something that, that the city is looking at.
Mr. Christmas.
Good evening, William Christmas, Pleasantville. As most of you know, I have a lot of history here in Pleasantville. And that's what I want to talk about. I want to talk about the history of the past because, um, one of our, uh, school board members last meeting brought up history in the past that the city council, not this city council, at the time, did not handle very well. And there's a need for me to bring the history up on the school, the new school, so that council in the past and council in the present are not looked upon as though they don't care. It was brought up that, um, where the Greyhound bus station is, or the Greyhound storage, that it would have been nice if the school had been built there as it is in other communities. The history behind that, I was on the school board at the time. I was chairman of the new school that was going in to find locations. The state had a rule at the time, and possibly still, you have to have a minimum of twenty-five acres for them to give the aid to help build these schools. Consequently, we were having difficulty finding area. And there was a proposal where this current school is, that three brothers were debating, they wanted to get rid of their land, and, uh, we're gonna sell it to the schools. So, at that time, I was at a luncheon and sat with the commissioner and spoke to him about, well, how do you deal with this minimum of twenty-five acres in the North Jersey schools? There's not enough acres to build a house. He said, they do not have the area, they do not have twenty-five acres, you do. In other words, Pleasantville did have it. So consequently, the site was planned. We, at the school system at the time, came before Ralph Peterson and the council and asked them about the very land where the Greyhound is. It was empty, and asked for him to donate it to the schools. Ralph said at the time, we are looking into someone who wants to purchase that land. Didn't know it was a bus station, I mean, didn't know it was Greyhound. Well, it was U.S. Coach at the time, didn't know that. He said, if we give the land to the schools, we lose the value of the land to sell it and have it as a ratable for years to come. He said, we're very much, someone wants to buy the land and this way we can help the citizens keep the taxes down and have a very good ratable for years to come. And that's how it happened. And I'm sure that it would happen that way today, that if you had somebody wanted to buy your land. So, that's the history behind it and I had to come forward because I didn't want the council to look bad then and now. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with a public?
Urban Miranda Rodriguez, seven thirty, New Maple Road, Pleasantville, New Jersey. I want to start this conversation off by stating, if I've ever come across as monstrous or disrespectful to anyone, I apologize. I really do. None of this has been personal. I've had, had great, a number of conversations, great conversations with most of you on city council. So when I stand up here, it's not with any intention to disrespect someone or to upset anyone in any way. If I come up here, it's because I care about the city of Pleasantville and its residents. But, the last city council meeting, I just have to bring in, I'm sorry that you're leaving Councilman Davenport. But after last city's, uh, council meetings, Councilman Davenport approached me on side and called me ignorant. And I took that to heart. Because nothing that I say or do is ever, ever my intention to disrespect anyone. So I apologize, I really do, if that's what you thought. That I was annoying, ignorant, medicine, disrespectful, all that stuff. But I'm really up here today because as, as Judy, uh, Mayor Judy Ward said, that once we take care of this Bernhard Capital situation, we would bring up this trash, uh, transfer site proposal again. So, I don't really want to miss words at this point, I'm exhausted, I'm sure you all are exhausted, you know. But Resolution one two seven has to go. But at this point, you know, I'm not seeing any movement from city council or from the mayor's office. So I hate putting people on the spot, but I ask each one of you again, similar to what I did to the Bernhard Capital situation. Are you for this trash transfer situation in Pleasantville, New Jersey, or are you against it?
I'm against it, but let me explain something to you. Um, unlike the concessionaire agreement that was the living, breathing document that was right here in our face, we, we rescinded it. Please understand that there has been no movement on this site except for a sign that was put up, says coming soon.
Yes.
I think I have the last document that was brought before the planning board and that was dated, uh, in November of twenty nineteen. So there's been nothing in almost three years. We, there's, there's nothing more out there. I, I think we just have to, once again, if everybody would please let the, the process go through and see what happens, I mean, like, there are hurdles all over the place that this has to pass before it even comes to us. Nothing has gone before the planning board, nothing's, there's been no mention of it here. There's EPA that has to be involved, there's CAFRA that's involved, there's county that's involved. None of that has been even approached, so we really can't. So, you know, there, there's no reason to do it because there's so many entities over us that can put the kibosh on it first.
So you're against it?
I, I am against it, because there's been nothing, we don't, you know, who knows what's going to happen with it? Maybe it was.
So is this a done deal? I don't understand.
There is no done deal. You, you well know, there's no done deal, right?
I'm just trying to understand.
There's no, I, I just don't, my opinion, only my opinion, is that if we haven't gotten any more documentation, any more, the Bernard Capital deal went kind of fixed. It was, you know, a year or two of negotiations and kind of vote. This is, this is three years and there's been nothing, no movement anywhere unless there's stuff going on in the state that we don't know of them, but the city hasn't been notified of anything else.
Councilwoman Thomas, are you for it or against it?
I'm against it and I'm voting against.
The trash transfer?
Yes.
Council president?
Listen, let me, let me say something to you, young man. When this council makes municipal law, we have to honor municipal law. And sometime, it ain't gonna be to your liking. It ain't gonna be to your liking at all, and we have to keep the city itself on our own way. We have an opportunity, we come through, negotiate issues. If, we're talking about parade, as we have, um, Colombian parade coming up, it's one vote. When we talk about major things, we got two, three votes, four votes, this was five votes, in the Southern.
For the trash transfer?
Excuse me, excuse me, you asked a question.
No, I'm just trying to clarify.
You asked a question, I'm giving you an answer, you, and I'm giving you my answer to you. My answer to you.
I'm trying to clarify.
When we make municipal law, we ain't gonna come back. We can't come back and we send along the money. We can't do that.
We should, but...
And we cannot do it. We have an opportunity to negotiate, to say yea or nay, whatever project it, whatever project it is. We have to keep the city out of harm, out of harm's way. We don't need to put the city in jeopardy, in litigation. We don't need damages, awards, uh, uh, things of, things of that nature. Who do we do business with? You say you're gonna come in, we do business, and we, and we bring the business in here, and then you say afterwards, when, when whoever it is, that's whatever amount of money that they spent, you say, "Okay, we're gonna take that back. We're gonna be sending that." How, how would we have a business, how would we have a city? How would we be able to do business? We couldn't do business. The, the history of, Mr. Christmas, it's right behind you, the history of this council, we've never done business like that. That's how we was able to do the projects, the various projects we've been doing.
So are you for it or against it?
I'm for it.
You're for it?
I'm for it.
Councilman Carmichael, are you for it or against it?
Well, I can't tell you right now, because, um, Ms. Cora will say that we have to go through procedures, but I don't, I don't know what, you know, what, what often they gonna give. And we have to wait for the state. So, uh, once they come up with a deal, then I can make my mind, you know, with the traffic station.
When, who makes the deal?
Whenever they come out and they let us know what's going on with the traffic station. Why not, we don't know nothing about the traffic station.
But who exactly are we waiting for to make the decision?
Whenever the state makes the decision.
So when is the state gonna make a decision?
I can't tell you that, because I don't know the state.
Solicitor.
So whenever it comes in part of us, then, whenever it comes in part of us, then we, uh...
When is the state gonna make a decision, solicitor?
Are you looking at me?
Yeah.
I just got here in twenty, two thousand and twenty-two, so all this predates me. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that history, so I, I can't...
Councilman?
Cora. So me personally, whether I'm against it or for it, it doesn't really matter. At this point, it doesn't really matter.
I think it does.
Well, no, I'm telling you, personally, it doesn't really matter, my opinion, at this point. There's so much more up in the air, as of, uh, EDP, or what's related.
I'm trying to get an answer, what's up in the air?
That's my answer to you. My answer to you is, I need to have the facts.
I'm hearing state, state is definitely from the EPA.
In writing, right here, in order for me to make a decision. I'm not, at this point, have enough information to make a smart decision, sir.
So when are you gonna have enough information?
I do have the information before me.
Okay, and when are you gonna present that?
I'm sorry, we're still waiting for the state, we're still waiting for the traffic, uh, all, all kinds of stuff. We're waiting for all kinds of...
Traffic from where?
Really important facts, in order for me to make a smart decision.
Okay, so where are the facts going to come from?
Uh, the minute we have it, it's, one of them's going from the state, we're still waiting, uh, the EPA, if I'm not mistaken, or so on and so forth. There's so much more that we need to have in place in order for, I believe, me make that, that smart decision, whether or not to state something like that. At this point, I don't think it's smart. I told you.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Anyone else from the public?
David Callaway, Pleasantville. It may be a shock to you, but I'm not here to talk about the transfer station tonight. My concern is, I got word from some of my neighbors, they are concerned about, uh, the whole Cedar Market on Main Street, North Main. They're talking about making that a, a, a bar, liquor store, restaurant. It was voted down, I don't remember, it was the planning board, zoning board voted it down. So, now, they're still pursuing making this thing a bar, liquor store. School's not too far from this area. We don't need no liquor store or bar there. I want to know, what is it that we can do to make sure that this does not happen? Can anyone?
Mr. Callaway, um, it did come before the planning board. It was not approved by the planning board. We had plenty of participation from the people, the surrounding community. Unfortunately, they appealed it. The judge upheld their appeal. It is back now in litigation, because we're appealing the appeal. I'm, but, obviously, we need that.
Yeah, that's the status, that we, we just sent out, um, our notice of appeal was due July first, um, and we sent out our notice of appeal to appeal the appeal. So we are actively working, trying to not have that taboo in here. Don't know what the likelihood of us succeeding, but we're trying.
So, no matter what the residents in that area want, wants, it's a possibility that this thing may happen.
Based on the law and...
Yes, I was reading on, on the matter. Obviously, it was a planning board matter, but I was reading as, as the township's solicitor, because, I mean, the city's solicitor, why? Because it's important to the city. Um, when Judge Johnson issued the order, the issue was squarely that the use was permitted by our ordinances. You remember Mr. Archie talked earlier about a master plan? That's why those conceptualizing what you envision for your city matters ahead of time. The way that this was envisioned by our, our ordinances, the judge read it and determined it was permitted to be that. So unfortunately, we're still litigating that, but it is an uphill battle for the city, according to the planning board attorney.
So, you're saying because that was a part of the master plan?
The master plan devises what we think our zoning should look like, and right now, the zoning for that particular location allows for that use.
So, in, the master plan, which was in two thousand and eighteen, I don't know if you can answer me. I didn't want to talk about it, but what, the transfer station involved in it, master plan in two thousand and eighteen?
That I can't answer.
Matter of what, is it municipal?
I, I, I wouldn't say the transfer station, but it might be, uh, and I don't know, because I, I haven't read the section where it actually speaks to that, but anything that the city is pursuing or likely to pursue, it has to line up with your master plan. So that's a question, right, to, to make sure that if that is something that the city desires, that it lines up, or it doesn't line up. So, that's a good question.
Now, um, now I'm back on the transfer station, I said I don't want to do it, but, uh, your solicitor?
Yes, sir.
You said you weren't here at the time?
I was not here.
Okay, but the gentleman had a question, and you don't have the answer. So, maybe at the next meeting, you'll have the answers for him. Because from what they're saying, it just doesn't, it just doesn't, it doesn't add up to why they, they don't want to rescind that vote. It's crazy. It's, it's very hypocritical. Very hypocritical. Don't say you don't have all the answers. Either you want it or you don't.
Um, Mr. Callaway, the, um, so much of what we do is, is based on what the zoning laws are, and what's the permitted use and everything, and what, the transfer station is initially, it was, it's zoned as light industrial down there.
Uh, wait, wait, one moment, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut you off, but it just bugs me, you keep saying transfer station. Call it the dump, what it is.
I'm, I'm trying to be...
It is what it is. It's the dump. It's a dump.
Yeah. It does have, the city, in that area, it's a permitted use as, as light industrial. But, there is nothing that says specifically in the redevelopment plan that it can be a, and please just bear with, as a use, as a transfer station, okay? So, there's, you know, some industrial, some light industrial, but doesn't say, it's not refined enough to say, "Yeah, you can put a transfer station or a recycling center." So, that might give you and everybody else some comfort in, in knowing.
I don't have any comfort, as long as that is in fact that transfer station dump, that, that is some kind of chance of this becoming reality. So, you keep saying you're waiting on a state, you're waiting for this document, this document? Just kill it right now. Kill it. So this thing is dead, and we won't have to worry about a transfer station.
So, I don't want to shoot from the hip, and what I mean by that is, I need to find the information. Look, I have been here and I've heard all of you talk about the transfer station. Anytime that I ask legally what the requirement of the council is, it's not right before the council, is my understanding. Whatever decision needs to be made, it's a rightness issue. So procedurally, my understanding with council is not the decision maker or the order at this moment. Now, I don't want to be, to give that advice, throw that information off the cuff, but that is...
So you have been here long enough to answer questions?
I've heard, I've heard the issue come up dozens of times, but when I ask...
And you knew about this, so you didn't do any research to find out?
My inquiry from my client is, what is my obligation at this moment? And what I've been told and instructed is that there's procedurally nothing before the council to be done. We've heard Councilwoman Fariah talk about the past. My understanding is that it's a decision of another body, which the planning board is...
So, so you're saying that council has never come to you about rescinding that vote?
Legally, that's not, procedurally, where everything is. It's not right before this body.
No, no, but the question was, has council come to you about the legality of them rescinding their vote on the transfer station? No one has.
It's at a different stage, from what I've heard from all of my client body here. And I'm just, I'm answering that question as honestly as I can.
Your council's solicitor. So that means you're the public's solicitor. Because we elected these people.
Absolutely.
So I'm asking you, is it legal for the, the city council to rescind their vote on this?
Procedurally, there's nothing before the bodies to take action, is what I, is what I'm saying.
So what, does that have to be emotional to move to rescind it?
Have to be able, it has to be right, an issue has to be right before the council to actually take a, an action.
Because I've been up here and I've asked, you weren't here at the time, can they rescind their vote? And I was told by a mentor, we have to do some research to find out if this thing could be rescinded. Never got information on, about how this thing could be rescinded. Never got any information. So now we're here again, asking, can this thing be stopped? No one in Pleasantville wants this thing. No one. No one but the mayor.
Let me, let me just explain where we are today, because you said you never got the answer. We never, since the time of the question, brought this issue back before council, so now you are. So the research that...
It wasn't, the council didn't ask. I asked a question, and you told me...
But you can't direct me. You, you put it out there, and council directed...
But you told me you was gonna give me the answer.
I understand what you're saying, but again, what I'm saying is council directed me, not, not you. You put it out there so that council could consider it. They did, and they gave me the, the directive to look into it. Once we looked into it, first of all, let me state that there's a conflict of interest with our, our current solicitor, Cooper Levinson, for that site because of the... And this is the complication of it, that I was trying to explain today, when you all brought this before city council, is why it wasn't recommended you take any action at that time, because then it was a, it, it was connected to a redevelopment plan that has a business there under this redevelopment plan. At the current time of that redevelopment deal, Cooper Levinson, which is our current solicitor, that wasn't our solicitor at the time, was representing that entity. So because of that conflict, we had to submit this information that you're asking to the city's conflict attorney. We submitted that information to the conflict attorney, met with the attorney, gave him all the background history, and we're waiting to be, for response from, from our conflict attorney to determine what action, if any, can city council take. That's where we are, and I'm hoping to get that soon, but that's where we are.
I got that. So that was done how long ago? It takes that long from the conflict attorney?
You have to understand that that is not the only issue that the city deals with on a daily basis. I personally and, and others in the city met with the conflict attorney sometime, uh, last week. So I was hoping to have the information actually for you tonight, but I don't, so I don't want to be...
The, the, the conflict attorney is actually council's attorney. So council, can you please find out this information? We don't need Linda to get it. We need council to get it. That's your attorney. Please get that information and let the public know what's going on, because this thing has to stop. No one wants this transfer station. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Excuse me, I want to check my time.
Oh, okay, I just had a question. Okay.
Anyone else from the public? Say anyone, motion for a public portion?
Motion.
All favor? Okay, um... Councilman Carrera?
I don't have any further comments at this time. I want to thank you all for coming out. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, before we, uh, before we go on, Chief, that trailer was on Haverson, Ashley. Yes, Ashland, Ashland and Haverson. Ashland and Haverson, yeah, that's the ones I, I make the report on. And I thank you everybody for coming out. Uh, have a blessed night and stay safe.
Councilwoman Van Marra?
Uh, I just hope everybody has a nice, happy, and safe holiday period, some vacation, whatever, enjoy yourself, and be safe. And watch out for kids on bicycles, be a kid.
Councilwoman Thomas?
I just want to make a correction from our last meeting. I believe that there was conversation that we had in reference to the, um, the dirt bikes. We did find out, I think, Mr. Archie, um, this was one of your concerns, that we can destroy, that we are going to destroy the dirt bikes, correct?
That is something that I was waiting to, after this meeting, to discuss, because I wanted to talk to the attorney. And I know we can destroy them, I want to find out the process.
Got it. Okay, so I know that Mr. Archie was concerned about, had an issue. Well, not an issue, but, I mean, a better understanding of that resolution that we had. Um, the other thing is, I have a report here from the Recreation Center. Just FYI, we do have aerobics there. Boxing is going on. We have ten new members. And we also have basketball for, um, males and females, from ages, uh, sixteen and under. Um, we also have soccer, um, soccer, and also have a weight and wellness, um, room. We had inspections done, and, um, right now, we also have a camp going on, I believe, for seventy-five children. And I want to say they may be almost, um, fully enrolled. So if anyone had any questions about any of the programs that I just mentioned, you could call, um, the director over there, this Katrina, and she could give you some information. So have a good night, all.
Thank you. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Anyway, I see Stefan is left, but, um, I saw clearer pictures than you have of what he's gonna do on the bike path, and it should make it real cheerful. He's gonna start off at the railroad tracks and, um, and minos, and start working that direction. And it should, you know, once he's done, in a few weeks, you guys go check it out, and it should be really, really nice, and make Pleasantville look pleasant, you know, as far as the bike path going all the way through. Also, I wanted to mention that on August ninth, at five-thirty P.M., at the library, we're gonna have a community ward meeting. We were gonna do first ward community, that was my hope, but, um, until we get it together and are able to separate first ward from second ward, we're gonna do them combined. So that's five, uh, the second Tuesday in August, August ninth, at the Pleasantville Library at five-thirty. We met last night, but it, it wasn't, um, it was like a last-minute thing, and we were at the Pleasantville Recreation Center, and it was good dialogue. There was a few of us there. Good dialogue, and just trying, and like I said, in the organizing stage, just... us there, good dialogue, and just trying, and like I said, in the organizing stage, to be able to get things out like this. You know, Mrs. Johnson's was, Mrs. Johnson was there, Dale was there, a few others, and you know, was there. And it'll work, you'll have a chance to discuss things that you want to discuss, rather than wait for the council meeting and not be able, I would attempt, not be able to discuss it the way that you want to discuss it, or ask the questions that you want to ask. And we'll, we're, like I said, I'm not going to get into it deep right now, but anybody that can make it, come out August 9th. And we're going to, I guess you could call City Hall, even if you want to leave your address or email, and we will be emailing. And we're going to find a way to contact you each month, probably through our Nixel, our Nixel communication. Okay? So everyone have a good night and be safe.
Ms. Peyton, you have one there?
I just want to recognize Jorge or George, you want to stand there?
Hello.
Your Colombian event that's taking place this month? The Tilton Park?
I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right? And I wave everybody over there.
It was nice last year, we had a good time.
Yes, we went and had a good time this time because we have one of the biggest band in Guauqua, as they call, La Sora Dinamita. It's 62 years, but this band is very popular. I mean, you guys will have a lot of people this time.
Is that, that's not the one that was there last year?
No, Mom, this is bigger, this is bigger. This is bigger, this is bigger. Carla, hello?
I'm worried about it.
Thank you very much.
Wow, we're still coming out.
Good evening, again, thank you. Good evening again, thank you for, Mr. Archie. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Archie.
Now, just asking to explain to everybody, because we don't know who the company even is. I didn't know about to just now.
Again, how you know?
No, yeah, it's all that, what, again?
Good evening again, thank you for, thank you for coming out. Just, you know, everybody just be safe, you know? We are at some of the worst times in America now, all the different type, in this world, really, coming out of pandemic, what's going on with Russia, and more importantly, also what's going on here. You can't go to a parade or any of those things without these masks. I didn't think to say the word, you know, but just be careful, be mindful, and at times like these, we really have to, we really have to go back to the word, you know? We have to go back while we're here, while we were serving, and what's our purpose? And to, to carry ourselves with dignity and pride, and to remind our young people that they, that they have to do the same things. So be safe, enjoy the rest of your summer. Be safe and enjoy the rest of your summer, and I'll take a motion too, but, God bless the city of Pleasantville. Take a man's, take a motion.